I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Fairbanks. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the introduction of a couple of individuals, and those individuals are going to be introduced by our Chief of Police, Bruce Lang. Chief?
Well, it gives me a great pleasure to announce these promotions. You know, in agencies our size, there's not always a lot of room for upward movement, and unfortunately, with the departure of Lieutenant Mike Oliver to a medical retirement, we had an opening. And so, it's kind of a domino effect when that happens. And what was Sergeant J. Murphy is now Lieutenant Murphy, and he has been with us for 28 years, which is longer than I've been here. So, I take no credit for hiring him, but I have promoted him twice now, so I guess I get some credit for that. He does a great job. He'll be taking over our investigations unit. It's a really busy place right now. That encompasses our drug enforcement, our youth services, our general investigator, and so, and he'll also be doing some investigative work himself. So, with that, I'll present to you Lieutenant J. Murphy.
Thank you.
The taller guy here, which they're all taller than me, but that's nonetheless, is Dan Moss. He was an officer with us. He's been with us a little over eight years, a military veteran, and also came to us from the Department of Corrections. And he's been with us a little bit over eight years, so let me present to you Sergeant Dan Moss. You know, it's just one of those things where you can, you feel the energy level of the department increase. Everybody is excited. You know, some people obviously are disappointed when the promotions don't go their way, but in this particular case, I know that the fellow officers really, really felt that these two individuals were the most deserving people for those promotions. And so, it's a pretty happy place right now with everybody moving into new assignments. Some guys get to come off in nights now and to days, and other guys get to go back to nights. That's why he doesn't have sunglasses. He won't need those after a few years. So, it's a great thing. And again, we appreciate your support, and these guys are gonna do a great job for us. Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests. First item on the agenda is Item A: Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B: Receive and Place on File All Notices Pertaining to This Meeting. Item C: Receive and Place on File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. Item D: Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on July 2, 2018, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E: Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims. E1: Approval of Gauge Area Growth Engage Claim in the Amount of $37,425.07. Item E2: Approval of Balance of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the Amount of $337,629.36. Item F: Approval of Boswar Report of Claims in the Amount of $58,532.39. Item G: Approval of Special Designated License Application of the Brass Rail for a Wedding on August 11, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. until 1:00 a.m. at Country Cookin' Cafe, 111 South 8th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item H: Approval of Special Designated License Application of Community Players, Inc., for a Fundraiser on August 3, 2018, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 412 Ella Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I: Approval of Change Order Number 1, a decrease in the amount of $5,000 for the Beatrice Water Pollution Control De-watering Pilot Study to Andrance Separation Technology, Inc., as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J: Approval of Beatrice Plus Funding Request from Lonnie Prefort in the Amount of $296.80 for flowers, mulch, and paint for the Welcome Sign on the East Side of Town, as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item K: Resolution Number 6239, approving the 90% Plans dated May 17, 2018, including Right-of-Way Plans for N-DOR Project Number ENH-3432, Control Number 13212, regarding installing a bicycle pedestrian trail from the Water Park to Hannibal Park. Is there any item, any member, wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Mr. Morgan?
I need to abstain from E1.
So, noted. Anyone else?
J.
Dwight? Item J? Anyone else? Anyone from the public want anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that all the items listed on the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item J, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the Consent Agenda be approved with the exception of Item J. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Item J, Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that Item J, Approval of the Beatrice Plus Funding Request from Lonnie Prefort in the Amount of $296.08 for flowers, mulch, and paint for the Welcome Sign on the East Side of Town, as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board, be accepted, approved, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that the Beatrice Funding Request from Lonnie Prefort be approved. Mr. Partey?
It looks like paperwork that this project was completed three months ago, and then it was approved after that. Is that true?
That's correct.
So, we're back billing something wasn't approved?
Mr. Prefort had, did the work out. The Welcome Sign came in, requested funding, and Beatrice Plus was the best funding source available. We then filled out the application on his behalf and submitted it.
I think it's a good idea, but usually, we've always had this to go into the future. We've approved it and then had someone do something. I just don't know, like the idea of backdoing. You might have a ton of people coming and say, "Well, I did this, and I did this," without permission to get it started. Now, I've been on discussions, too. Do we know who even owns those signs? There's been lots of issues. We keep Beatrice beautiful because at one time it was a Lions Club, and then one time, though, they don't have it, and then somebody else does. So, there's not even sure who.
I think it was a combination of different clubs that owned them.
Yeah.
I don't know if I definitively could tell you who owns them as of today.
I'd hate to see us going back and back, paying for something someone's done, and then bring it to us after the fact.
Another discussion. Any comments from the public? And your vote, please. That is approved. Five in favor and two opposed, with Kerr and Partey voting against. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing on the new application of Rojelio Coronado and Rojelio de Jesus Coronado, doing business as Country Cookin' Cafe, 111 South 8th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Yes. We conducted the standard liquor license application, and nothing was uncovered that would preclude us from recommending this for approval.
Rod Merrill, Chief Billing Inspector, did the planning report for the liquor license. Basically, everywhere around that area, Central Business District, the land uses that are adjacent are a personal service general office and mostly parking. There is one residential that's a non-conforming use. It's to the south there. But again, this, this building has had liquor licenses in the past. I'm not sure the previous tenant was, but prior to that, the Eagles were there for a number of years. So, I don't foresee any negative effects in that building.
Questions? Comments from anyone? From the public? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Catlin, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 p.m.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 p.m. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Rojelio Coronado and Rojelio de Jesus Coronado doing business as Country Cookin' Cafe, 111 South 8th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for Approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaum, that the application of the Coronados be approved. Any further discussion? And the public, and your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Next is a public hearing to amend and add sections of the zoning ordinance of the City of Beatrice, Ordinance Number 94-13, specifically to amend Section 222 relating to definitions, to amend Table 4-2 relating to the permissibility of operating a bed and breakfast in residential areas, to amend Section 307 relating to commercial use types, and to add Section 708 relating to storage containers.
The first two that you see there, the amendments to Section 222 and Table 4-2, was in response to receiving an inquiry about operating an Airbnb here in town and whether or not that was permissible. So, when we went to go look, we found that the table had, like, one of the residential zones, it was permitted, one, you could do it with a special use permit, and the rest were, didn't say anything about it. So, the change to the table goes in and just makes them all, makes it uniform. All of them would require a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast in a residential area. And the change to, Section 222 is just the definition for bed and breakfast. As of now, it requires that you serve breakfast. The change makes it so you don't have to serve breakfast for a bed and breakfast that doesn't do so.
Does everybody know what an Airbnb is? Okay. Does, if, everybody on the public? Okay. Sometimes people don't, and so, we just wanna make sure you understand what, what's the issue that came forward to us. So.
So, they'll pay lodging taxes and everything?
Yep.
And Planning and Zoning reviewed it, and they recommended approval.
So, if, if we allow business in residential, then some guy starts a small engine business in residential, or some lady wants to put a hairdressing business in residential, are we gonna allow that? Since we've got this, they'll come back and say, "You let bed and breakfasts in?"
You already allow home occupations in your zoning book today. There are certain requirements. Mostly gets into traffic issues, and do they cause inconvenience or, or something that would bother the neighbors. Those types of businesses generally aren't allowed. One problem that we have is, quite honestly, your zoning book was written in the 70s before the internet. Now, with the, and the internet out there, a lot of people have home businesses and buy and sell stuff at home, and nobody ever knows, except the UPS guy shows up once a week. So, there are home businesses that are allowed today.
I know a few years back, we had a problem with one, one person, and it took us quite a while to get it figured out. So, all right.
Any other comments, gentlemen? Anyone from the public? All right. Mr. Catlin?
Well, do you wanna talk to the storage containers?
Yeah, we've, we've got one more section to talk about. 708 would be added to the zoning ordinance, and 307 would be amended. This is in regards to the storage containers. We had one public hearing on this before, kinda got some additional feedback at the hearing and afterwards from the public. So, there was a few changes made. The major changes are that we added in that even on lots that are zoned, general industrial, light industrial, general commercial, so where we wanna allow, where we would allow storage containers, if one of those lots is, has an existing non-conforming use as a residential house, they could not have a storage container. And that storage containers wouldn't be allowed anywhere that falls within a floodway, even if it's zoned, so that they could otherwise have one. If it's in the floodway, you can't have them there. And then we added in that storage containers, owners who have previously taken all the steps to make them accessory buildings, like we said, we previously dealt with them as accessory buildings, because we didn't have anything in the zoning books about them. So, owners who have previously taken all the steps to make it an accessory building, pouring the concrete slab, anchoring it down, getting the building permits, those will be allowed to stay as accessory structures. So, they won't count against your, like, in general commercial, they won't count against the limit of two. And if there's one in, I guess I'm not sure if there's one in a residential area like that or not, but if there was, it would be allowed to stay.
Questions from the council?
Yes. When I read this, I got totally confused. It's muddy. It's gray. Explain to me, how many of these things can they have in residential?
None.
Two?
None.
Why none? Are they not accessory buildings?
That's today's current definition. The new definition won't, will not classify them as accessory buildings, but simply will ban them from being in residential neighborhoods.
Why?
I think as a policy issue, these types of units don't need to be in residential neighborhoods. They're not designed to be there. I think aesthetically, they're just not pleasing probably in residential neighborhoods.
I think that's where the majority of the complaints come from as well, Rich, is in residential areas, people that have them, that don't want that next door.
Okay. General commercial, general business, all the other ones, how many can they have?
General commercial's limited to two, but for the other zones where there will be allowed, which is ag, light industrial, general industrial, there's not a limit.
What about central business areas?
That, as of this version here, Central Business District is listed in the districts that cannot have them.
Well, I don't agree with that. I think they should be able to have two in residential, and I think that as long as they can hit the setbacks in any other, in any other zoning that, as long as they can hit setbacks, they should be able to have as many as they want. We're, we're talking about messing with people's businesses. I, I can't, I can't buy that. And also, in the floodplain, what stage of the floodplain can they not be? One, two, or three? Or all three of them?
Not sure what you mean by one, two, or three.
We have stage one floodplain. We have stage two floodplain. We have stage three floodplain.
Our zoning map refers to it as floodway and flood fringe. Generally, we say floodway is the actual floodway, which is, I believe, the 100-year floodplain. They're designated on the zoning map as to the difference.
One and two. But we still allow buildings to be built in what I call stage two, which is, I believe, the 50-year they begin.
No, we're, we don't allow buildings to be built in the 100-year floodplain anymore. If you're gonna build in the 100-year floodplain, the minimum, minimum building, the minimum living level has to be one foot above the 100-year floodplain. Am I stating that correctly?
That's right. I think I'm gonna have to come down and look at your floodplain maps again, 'cause it must've been changed since the last time I dealt with it. So, I, I just, I, I just can't, I can't, I can't vote for this.
Okay. Anyone else on the council that has a comment? From the public? Rod?
Rod Ream, I own a property at 512 South 5th, and...
You can sit down if you want, Rod.
Oh, thank you. Today, you said they cannot be in Central Business District, containers, correct?
That's how this is drafted, yes.
I had the billing inspector today come down, and he said I could have two there.
Did you take the steps to follow the accessory?
I only got the billing permit.
Yeah, that's, that's what I had.
I got that a couple of weeks ago. But now, he, you said that it couldn't be in Central Business. He said it could. Where am I at?
Your grandfather, Dan.
No, 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 no. We don't use that word. It's a very, very, legal terms have very legal meanings. Rod, my indication is that you obtained the necessary billing permits today, correct?
I had them for a couple of weeks ago.
So, as the way it's written, as long as people have the necessary billing permits, and they've been properly inspected, installed, and all those things are done, you'll be allowed to keep the two that you have down to your Central Business District.
And I got two down there for sale, 'cause I had six at home, and...
You won't be allowed any more than the two that you've got the billing permits for.
Yes. 'Cause you said, when I put them there, they looked nice at my house. I hauled in probably 50 yards of rock to have it all nice and level, all on rock. Now, I'm moving them all. What else do you want me to do? You know, I'm trying to do, do it, but every time I do something, "Oh, we're gonna change it for this."
So, you're allowed to?
Right.
Where your business is today?
Right, at the old Country Cook.
Right, right.
And I got them cleared back by the alley. You can't, you can see them from the street, but in six months, nobody's even gone over there. You know, 'cause people get used to them, and they drive by. Maybe you drove by, standing, never seen them.
I've seen them.
Well, yeah, but you know what I'm saying?
I do.
I, I try to, trying to keep it nice, but, you know, we gotta get somewhere.
So, do you have two there now, or four?
I got four, but two for sale.
Okay. You'll be allowed to have two. You're allowed, you're allowed to have two.
I was told to get them out of my yard, bring them down there to sell them, instead of getting them, and getting them out of residential. So, I...
Just a minute, Rich. Just a minute.
And I got one at home. It's supposed to be sold, but he, we gotta toss a crit to get it to where it's gotta go. I'm gonna find out this week if he wants it or not. If not, I wanna take it down there and put a for-sale sign on it. And then I'm complying, I think, with the city to get them out of my yard.
You're gonna be allowed two at your business?
Right.
That's it?
Okay. And what should I do? Where should I put the other ones I wanna sell? Park them on the street somewhere?
I wouldn't do that if I were you.
Well, you know what, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, Rod.
It's written into the ordinance that, uh, storage containers that exist now that are in violation, you've got until October 16th to come into compliance. So, you've got three months to figure it out.
Well, Rod, to sell them.
Can you sell them in three months, Rod? Don't do that.
We, we do flea markets. We got stuff we've had for two years, and then all of a sudden, the next, tomorrow, they might, it might sell. You don't know.
Okay.
But I got them for sale. I don't know what else I can do. You know, I got for-sale signs on 5th Street on them. So, I should be safe with having two on the LA access, in line with the building, you know, so it looks decent.
Right.
And like I said, the other three are for sale, but...
You got a billing permit, so the two you have down there will be allowed to continue, 'cause you've met all the accessory structure rules. The other ones you have, you have until middle of October to come into compliance with the rest of them. So, we're gonna give you some time to get them sold, get them moved, whatever you need to do. So.
Fair enough.
Okay, yeah. But when she said, "No, the Central Business District," you know, we're fighting against ourselves again. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet, Rod. Rich?
So, what, what's he gonna do with the other three if he doesn't get them sold by October? We've created this problem. We made him move them. We, we put a new regulation in.
How much time do you think we should give him, Rod?
I don't know.
Rod, Rich?
I don't know. How long's it gonna take him to sell them? We've put all these rules and regs in. They may not wanna, people may not wanna buy them unless they're outside the city, city limits. I mean, we created the problem for the gentleman. We had to have him move them, because it wasn't allowed up there. So, he took them down to the Central Business Area. Now, we put a new restriction on it, that it's only, only two that he can have. He's got five. He's got, he'll have three down there he has to sell. If he can't get them by October and get them sold by October, where, where's he gonna put them?
Well, I, in...
I mean, it, it was us that created his problem.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm Rod's wife, and I, you know, I just wanna say, we spent $500 to get them. We were told they were fine in residential. Then we were told it was we had too many outdoor structures. Okay? So, okay, we'll move them. But now, we spent $500 to, to keep you guys happy and get them out of residential, except for the one that is supposed to be sold, that we left out there. But, you know, yeah, now we're, what are you gonna do? Spend another $500 to move them if we don't get them sold by October? There's for-sale signs on them. You know, I mean, what are we supposed to do?
Hopefully, you get them sold.
You know, I mean, we, we try. You know, we go down the city, and we talk, and we talk, and we talk, and we do this, and we do that. And we're still, you know?
I believe in our conversations, we gave you several different ways to come to compliance or find different ways. We're very creative with you trying to find solutions.
Yeah. You, actually, you told us first that if we would attach it to our garage there, we could keep them at home.
We, we tried to get creative.
Right. You know, I'm, I'm just saying, we've spent $500 already to get them moved, keep you guys happy, get them out of residential, you know? And I mean, we had them all butted up against each other. They looked very, very nice, not like down here on 9th or 10th Street, where there's grass growing, and, you know, one's sitting here and one's sitting here, and crap laying all over the place. Ours didn't look like that.
And my suggestion would be is we get closer to the October deadline. If it becomes an issue, come back out and talk to us. And if it's one of those where you need to have some more time or need to do something else, we certainly could look into it.
You know, like I said, we've got for-sale signs on them. And he's talked to a few people about them, you know? But, you know, you can't, you can't just make somebody buy them either.
Sure.
You know, so...
Thanks. Anybody else?
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a real quick question.
Yes, sir.
To Abby, do we require any type of different, type of zoning for, like, the car lots that have the buildings sitting on their lots that they sell? Or does that fall under, which zoning does?
It depends what district they're in.
Well, like, Rod's where, his is in the Central Business District. But, I mean, I mean, he can, can he have a car lot right there if he wanted one?
That might be a better question for Rod. Rod knows the zoning stuff better than I do.
Or could he have, if he wanted to sell, like, those little buildings that they've got in some of the different places, can he put them up there and sell them?
Well, it's funny you bring that up, 'cause that's a discussion that I've had, Tobias and I have kinda started over the last couple of months, was what do you do with that, those storage shed inventory? Like, the old Heartland Motors has, you know, seven or eight building, accessory buildings out there for sale. Houston's up on Court Street there, the old Price Chopper there. That's a great question that I think we need to look into. Also, the one down on Sumner and, or LaSalle and, and West Court. We probably need some type of regulation on that in terms of inventory or limits of what the inventory can be, or meeting setbacks in some of those, some of those that's just been dropped there and for sale, and we don't really have any real rule on them. I mean, they're not being used in an accessory structure, although they are, they're just sitting there for sale. So, it's, it's, it's a, it's an area that hasn't been addressed, I would say.
Before we get too carried away with, with Rod's situation, can we check into that and just really see what is allowed, or how we can allow those that are being for sale?
It, it's, again, it's not...
As long as they're not obstruction, you know, to the traffic flow around there or anything like that. If, in Central Business District, how much difference is that commercially wise, or how, from, from like your commercial zone, what you can do, what you can't do to sell product?
In terms of uses, what you can do on Central Business District and general commercial?
Yeah, Rod's corner down there, the old Country Cook, or...
There's probably more limitations on Central Business District, just because there's no, generally, there's no extra space on those lots.
His lot's kinda unique.
Pardon me?
His corner's kinda unique.
Yeah, his is unique. I would agree. But again, it, it's still classified as, as Central Business District. Now, you know, we've had this discussion, Tobias and I have a few times, and Greg, when he was here, was, you know, we tend to feel that that corridor kinda south of Market Street should be rezoned to general commercial, because it fits that more properly. Whereas, the Central Business District fits more towards your downtown area that has zero setbacks and those type of things. It, it makes more sense. It's, it's obviously never been done. It'll take some work to, to get there if that's what you wanna do, but I think the general commercial zones generally allow you a little more leeway to do certain, to do a lot more things. So...
I'd like us to look at that, that corridor, the whole thing, and see what, if we could change that or something.
I have a question for Abby. For my house, if I was to buy one of these storage containers, could I get a permit and turn it into an accessory building?
Not after this ordinance is passed.
You cannot use that same metal to put on a concrete base, and then like you would a accessory building now?
Not after this ordinance is passed, not in a residential.
Just because it's metal, or?
You mean just 'cause the storage container's metal?
Yeah.
Uh, no, just...
I say we're banning it, but I don't know why it wouldn't be considered also a accessory building if I built it that way, so it's secure to the concrete?
Here's, here's one of the problems we have with that question, is that it's not addressed. There's nothing in the building code that allows that structure, other than if somebody wants to bring me a stamped plan from an engineer that says, "This building's a safe building," so to speak. There's nothing in a building code that allows, that tells... There's nothing in a building code that allows, that tells us that it can be built that way. You know what I'm saying?
Do we have that for a twenty-foot shed from Leonard's?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially?
I mean, I mean, you have, you know, you have your stick frame building codes, and we apply those to accessory structures. You have your, uh, post frames, which pull bars, and those that are applied. For this, you're talking just solid steel that is what it is, and, and to say that's, you know, there's nothing in there that says this structural law, I can apply that in a building code. That's the problem. And now we're talking kind of about two different things. One, we're actually talking about a storage container and a shed or accessory structure. So, I mean, it's apples and oranges in a way, but yet, from the use standpoint, people are trying to compare apples for apples, so.
Anyone else from the city council? Rod, did you have something else?
I gotta do this gentleman about rezoning. I'd be willing to rezone my lot over there, down there, to the general commercial. But I gotta pay the hundred dollars, whatever the fee is, to get a rezone and do the legwork for Cooper Tire, Nokes, and that big substation. I think you said Mr. Kempf, they, they just go along with that. But I gotta do the legwork, but why shouldn't the people or the business workers of the city try to rezone that for us? Instead of me having to do, pay money for something I would go for, and then maybe it'd make it easier on the next person doing it with my building?
Well, I think you have two options there. If you want to, you can wait until the city takes it up in our due course of time, which may not meet your timeframe. If you want it done sooner than that, that's when you need to make the application and make the request. I believe the reason why you would need to ask your surrounding neighbors is so that we don't get into a spot zoning issue where it's just rezoning your property, much like we did very close to you. If you get adjoining property owners to go in with you that are similar in situation as you are, it makes it easier to rezone that area. And that's why we...
And if I get a, because this gentleman said, told me that he would like to have commercial, general commercial all the way to Market Street in time.
It makes more sense, I'm not sure. I want to have it, it just makes more sense.
Am I right that you said that?
I did, I said it makes more sense. I don't, it's not really up to me, but...
We're, you know, if we start somewhere with the city helping us do it, instead of us doing all the work, because we don't know all the regular rule, what goes down to get a rezone.
I said, you, you, those are the two options, and that's why we would ask you, you be involved if you want it done quickly, to make sure you get your neighbors on board, that they're not going to either fight you, or at a minimum, hopefully supports you at a maximum. That's why we would ask you to do those things. If you want to simply sit back and wait for the city to take it up, then we would ask for no cooperation or input from your part. We would simply do the work ourselves whenever we get to that issue. I can't say it'll be today, or tomorrow, or next week by any means, though.
Right, uh, and then on the storage containers, you said they'd be accessory buildings?
Ones that where the property owners have already taken, had already get the concrete and anchored it. If you've done that already, then we're allowing you to keep them as accessory structures.
Well, I ain't up for the concrete yet, because I just got the building permit. I was told, don't do nothing until we're sure of what we're gonna do. So is this gonna be the law after tonight?
If it passes.
It depends how...
Thank you.
Anything else from the city council, the public? Mr. Catlin, you entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:33 PM.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:33 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Next item is ordinance to amend table that four dash two and section 307 of the zoning ordinance, City of Beatrice, ordinance number 94 dash 13, relating to the permissibility of operating a bed and breakfast in residential districts and commercial use types.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18 dash 017. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given number 18 dash 017. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is non-debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 017 by number the first time. Ordinance number seventeen, 18 dash 017 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18 dash 017 by number third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18 dash 017 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Party, that ordinance number 18 dash 017 be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would know, I would think Abby may have, is that planning zoning did recommend approval of this, uh, ordinance before you tonight.
Very good. Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 017 has been passed and adopted. Next is ordinance number, uh, to amend section 222 and to add section 708 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Beatrice, ordinance number 94 dash 13, relating to the definitions and storage containers.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18 dash 018. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Cook, that ordinance number be given 18 dash 018. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that's approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 018 by number the first time. Ordinance number 18 dash 018 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18 dash 018 the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18 dash 018 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Billsbach, that ordinance number 18 dash 018 be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
I'd only noted this, planning and zoning also recommended approval of this, this ordinance tonight.
Only, can I, I don't know if this is appropriate time to bring it up. I would just like to see planning zoning, look at that corridor that Rob was talking about, and, uh, if they have time to move that up a little bit, and see what they can come up with, of course.
We'll add it to the list.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, gentlemen, your vote, please.
Wait a minute. We didn't, uh, did we get a second on that?
Yeah, we did, Billsbach.
Okay, and discussion?
We had, I asked for discussion.
Okay, I would like to discuss something on it right quick before we take the vote. I'm gonna vote no on this. I think it's muddy. I think we're, uh, getting into people's livelihoods on the businesses, on the general commercials. I can, I think it was fine that you, you re-classified them from, uh, uh, into storage containers, uh, instead of accessory buildings, just to get it to where we can do this. And, uh, there's people who sell them, buy them, and I think it's muddy. I think it's, it's gray. It should, two of them on residential, and as long as they meet the setbacks on all the other ones, they should be able to have as many as they have. So that's why I'm voting no on it.
Anyone else? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved, six to one, with councilman Kerr voting no. Ordinance number 18 dash 018 has been passed and approved. Next item is an ordinance to close and vacate a portion of Edgemont Avenue located in Brumback Second Edition to the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, adjacent to parcel number ID, uh, number is 010-507-000.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18 dash 019. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
By Catlin, second by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 18 dash 019. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 019 by number the first time. Ordinance number 18 dash 019 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18 dash 019 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18 dash 019 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Billsbach, that ordinance number 18 dash 019 be passed and approved. Discussion?
We have several ordinances and resolutions coming forward tonight, having to deal with the vacation of Ridgemont Avenue, um, down in the Belvedere area, a portion of town, South Fifth Street. It's a platted street from way back when that's never been used, and so we had some discussions about vacating this. The property owner that owns both the north side and the south side of the street, um, that being Chris Wiltowski and his wife Kim, have asked that this be vacated. So the first thing you see is an ordinance tonight to close and vacate Ridgemont Avenue. The next one you see is an ordinance to convey it, and then finally, you'll see a resolution to actually enter into the contract for the sale of the real estate to the Wiltowskis. So a three-step process to achieve a parcel of ground that nobody knows where it's at or has been used for quite some time.
Any further discussion? Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 019 has been approved. Next is item D, ordinance to convey the vacated portion of Edgemont Avenue located in Brumback Second Edition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, adjacent to parcel ID number 01, 010-507-000, owned by the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Chris C. Wiltowski and Kimberly A. Wiltowski.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18 dash 020. The title for, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Party, that the ordinance be given number 18 dash 020. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 020 by number the first time. Ordinance number 18 dash 020 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18 dash 020 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18 dash 020 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Morgan, that ordinance number 18 dash 020 be passed and approved. Any further discussion regarding the Edgemont property?
My only question is...
Yes, sir.
For the Edgemont property, we're selling it for $600, but the next one coming up, we're selling it for $100. Why is this one worth six times more than the...
It's much bigger.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't find it on the maps, I was like...
Yeah, it's much bigger.
Okay, that answers that question.
And the second parcel also has a utility easement that runs across the entire length and width of the property.
Any other discussion? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 020 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution, resolution number 6240, entering into a contract, uh, for sale of real estate to Chris C. Wiltowski and Kimberly A. Wiltowski.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number 6240 be passed and adopted.
By Catlin, second by Party, that resolution number 6240 be passed and adopted. Discussion? Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 6240 has been approved. Next is an ordinance to close and vacate the alley between Hill Street and Grove Street, and between Pleasant Street and Bismarck Street in Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18 dash 021. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given number 18 dash 021. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 021 by number only the first time. Ordinance 18 dash 021 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18 dash 021 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18 dash 021 be passed and approved.
By Catlin, second by Morgan, that ordinance number 18 dash 021 be passed and approved.
This is a piece of property located by Riverside Park. It's probably the easiest way for people to get an idea of where it's at. It's a platted alley, uh, again, that's not been used for quite some time. We do have some utilities that run through there, and so, along with the vacation and closing of that alley, uh, you also have the ordinance to convey it tonight. You have the resolution then to enter into the contract for sale of real estate, but we are also retaining a utility easement over the entire parcel for utilities that are already in there. I believe that the property owner wishes to install a fence, and so we'll do what we do with all the other fences in that type of situation. They'll sign an agreement, understanding that they're putting a fence up. In the event we ever need to get into our utilities in an emergency, we'll remove the fence, do the work we need to do, and say we'll not be responsible for those costs. But again, these utilities have been there for some time and have not been an issue, so.
Questions? Yes, sir.
This is right across the street from me. Bob, the 14A, where Bob is, where the camper is, and if you look on your map, the little house down here, uh, facing Hill Street. They got a feud going. Now, Bob and Tara wants to put a fence to fence off this gal from, from their empty lot. There has been no pins found, there has been no property lines found. So you must make it clear to them that they're going to have to probably get a surveyor in there to find the pins, to find the property lines, so we don't have a total war going on down there. I've been dealing with this for three months with these two women, and it's, it's, it's getting heated. So you're gonna have to tell them, if they're gonna do this, they have to find the pins, they have to find the property line, and the only way you can do that is get a surveyor down there and find the pins.
Correct.
So that has to be understood before that fence goes up. She bought used fencing and everything, which is fine, but if you remember correctly, she put the, put the T-bar's up there and put three lines of, of wire up there with little rags hanging on it. And there's a war going on there, and you, we need to get it settled. I've had Rob over there a half a dozen times, and Rob's done everything but pull his, well, he hasn't got any hair, but he's done everything but pull his hair out on this thing. So the property line has to be found. Otherwise, I don't have a problem with it. Because if they come to me, I'm sending them to you, Abby.
Now, that's just standard building.
Take care of it, okay.
Hello, I'm, I'm lost where we're at.
We are ready to vote on the motion to, uh, pass ordinance 1821.
Very good. All right, any other discussion? And, and your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number, uh, 18 dash 021 has been passed and adopted. Next is item F, an ordinance to convey the vacated portion of the north-south alley located between Hill Street and Grove Street, between Pleasant Street and Bismarck Street, owned by the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Robert M. Mullin and Tana M. Mullin.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18 dash 022. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Party, that the ordinance be given number 18 dash 022. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 022 by number only the first time. Ordinance number 18 dash 022 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18 dash 022 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18 dash 022 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Catlin, second by Billsbach, that ordinance number 18 dash 022 be passed and approved. Any further discussion required? All right, and your vote, please. And is that, that is approved, seven, zero. Ordinance number 18 dash 022 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution number 6241, entering into a contract for sale of real estate to Robert M. Mullin and Tana M. Mullin.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number 6241 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Party, that resolution number 6241 be passed and adopted. Discussion? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven, zero. Ordinate, uh, resolution number 6241 has been passed and approved. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone have anything for the public forum? Phil?
PD took it from me, though, but, uh-
Beg your pardon?
I was gonna say the same thing PD did, David, that let's look at South Sixth Street, see if that should be GC.
Sixth Street or Market Street?
Well, this Market Street corridor going south.
Yep.
See if that is, with NOC's in there, expanding their business in the last few years, and Shone's expanding their business to the two sides of the street. It might be more, make more sense now that it's more central, not central business district. We might take a look on West Court to see if that district should be changed.
West Court, I believe, is general commercial, limited commercial, yes. The central business district is just in the downtown, what you think of the downtown.
See if we need to tweak that while city, while the planning zoning is looking at it, if it's, needs to be updated. It's been quite a while.
Yeah.
If it's not updated since we did it when I was in 1988, so it's probably about time they actually took the maps out and looked them over and see if they're still, what they're being used for, or for something better to be used for.
Anyone else from the council? Mr. Preetford?
I have a few things I'd like to say. My name's Lonny Preetford. I live here in town. Been here for 25 years, I guess, 20 years. Say, I'd like to know about the rentals of these new, uh, duplexes up here where the old hospital was. Uh, there's trouble there, because, see, there's a lot of people like, there's a lot of fellows like me, and I rent the different ones, and my, there's a party that comes in, she says, you know, I think I'll just move up to one of them new duplexes, because the money's the same, like $450, and I think I'll move into a new duplex. Well, that bothers people like me, because, uh, how can she do this? Who's giving her the, who's giving her the extra money? Where's the money coming from? I mean, I'll take a new Cadillac anytime if somebody wants to give me the half of it, and so-
Hey, Lonny, is there a subject matter you want to talk about here? Because this is a public forum. We really can't discuss items on the public forum, other than you bring something up and we, we look at it and maybe discuss it at a later date.
Okay, sir. Yes, sir. Well, the duplex situation, the money, that's where I'm coming in to you. I mean, I don't know why the person at the duplex like mine should rent and have a new one for the same price.
What I would suggest maybe is get ahold of city administration, Tobias, and he can kind of convey some of that information to you. Would that be fair?
Okay, I'll do it. And then I want to bring your attention to, well, 17th and Lincoln, it's just a little minor affair, 17th and Lincoln, there's, I have a duplex up there on 17th and Washington, that, that the alley right to the south of me is pretty trashy. And so I'd like to ask you about that. Maybe we could clean that. And then on Ninth Street, also down there on Ninth and Lincoln, on the south side of Ninth and Lincoln. And then I'd like to ask you about, on Lincoln Street itself, why can't they take the sidewalk on the south side of Lincoln Street and make it wider? Because the sidewalk is not needed. Well, it's needed, but we need it for cars and the like, because the people meet each other, and there can be some racks there pretty easy. The sidewalk, the, the, the street could be made wider there, sir. And real easy, taking the sidewalk out and from, from Eighth and Lincoln to 19th Street. That's what I would say. And then, I do have Eighth and Lincoln over here. I own Eighth and Lincoln, a sixplex. I keep it clean. I'd like to have the other folks keep it, their property clean. And then, thanks for giving me the, well, the right here tonight of, I know you said, well, I didn't ask, but thanks for, I guess I'm gonna acquire the little check for, for fixing up the sign at Eighth East Court. I have that 12plex up there on 102 North 25th, and, and I have some real good people, real good folks in there, so we're trying to take care of that end of town. And so we try to keep our properties looking good, and I think some of that stuff should be taken in concern. Like Eighth and Lincoln Street should be widened. I think it should be Lincoln Street up to Eighth, up to 19th Street. And so that's all I got to say, I guess.
Okay. Thanks for fixing up the sign also, Lonny. Appreciate that.
Thank you. It looks nice, and, and we've, we've put our little thoughts to it, and we wouldn't have had to, but since I own the building right close to it, I thought it'd make the city sign look better. And so, but these other little, these thoughts here, I like to keep things clean, so that's what I'm up to.
Okay. Very good. Any questions of Lonny? Anybody? Thank you very much, Lonny.
I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Next item is item seven, city administrators' monthly report.
I just took up all highlights to hit for you. Cardboard recycling. We talked about the work session. We do have cardboard-only recycling containers currently set up at Sixth and Perkins Street, down there by Dempsters, and then we have another one out at Sunmart in their parking lot as well. Thanks to Santeri Garbage for their cooperation in getting those painted and installed. They are servicing those, and so they're picking them up and making sure they stay clean and get dumped as they get filled up. And so we'll try that and we'll report back how that goes for us as we move forward. Hannibal Park, if you have not been out there, the picnic shelter has been established and built. Twenty-six by 26-foot picnic shelter is built. It is in the outfield of Field Number Five, if you've been out there, if you know where the fields are at. East, it's Field Number Five. The playground is gonna be starting to be installed, probably should have started today, but they're gonna start installing the playground next to it. Then the sidewalk will get poured, the trail system through there, and then hopefully when the next trail comes in, that being the Hannibal Park, the water park trail system comes in, it'll connect everything, and we'll finish that project out eventually. You probably have all should have gotten a letter about the hazard mitigation open house, and FEMA requires that we have an updated hazard mitigation plan. We're required to update it every five years. If you do not have one, if disaster strikes, you do not get FEMA federal disaster relief money after the event, so.
Remind me when that meeting is?
It is July 25th. It's a Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00. It's an open house, and so you're not required to be there the entire time. If you're driving home, look for something to do for a half hour if you wanna stop in, chat, see how the plan looks, see what's going on. Feel free to stop in. The public's invited to stop in as well, but JEO's helping us put that plan together and do that. South of Library, in case anybody has a free moment to stop out there. Dorsey Street is open, so if you've been out driving around, it is open.
Dorsey Street is open?
It's open. We got it done a year early.
Dorsey Street's open nine days early.
They moved all the barricades to 19th Street. But we moved all the barricades to 19th Street. If you've been on 19th Street, you notice there's been a couple blowups on 19th due to the excessive heat. It was gonna be faster for the street department to go in and do it all at one time, rather than trying to do half the street and then the other half and try to coordinate it. And so 19th Street is closed currently from Ella to High Street, so we're trying to get traffic off of there so we can get it open. Dorsey Street, we will have to close it again here at some point. We're gonna diamond grind that street. Over the years, as we've gone and replaced one panel and then the next panel, all of them kind of sit just a little bit different, and so as you kind of drive down, you notice a bunch of little bumps. The diamond grind will just smooth everything out. That should be a day or so. I mean, it's not a long process, but unfortunately the barricades will have to go back up. We will have to close it.
You're looking to do it this year?
Yes, we're gonna do it yet this year. I don't know if the date's been picked yet, but I thought it was in the next 30 days, but don't quote me on that one. Hopefully they will. We did find out today that although Dorsey Street was closed and barricades were up, at some point when the street department had the, the concrete all removed from the hole, had all the rebar laid in there, ready to pour, somebody decided to drive around the barricades and into the hole.
True.
And over the top of all the rebar, and bent a bunch of it and moved it, and so we had to spend another day or so fixing all that stuff. People just be patient and stay out of streets that are closed. We'll get them done a little bit faster. I don't know how they got back out of the hole at the other end, but they managed to somehow, so.
Or drive.
And then the Logan Street Alley. This is a project we brought to you probably 18 months ago or so, Fifth to Sixth, Logan. There was an alley between two apartment buildings. We didn't know what to do with it. We've gotten that repaired, and so we worked with the one property owner. She went in, did a bunch of work on her side, got her steps done. We went ahead then and had Casper's Construction. They did a wonderful job. They got right in there and fixed the alley for us, got that project taken care of, and so probably at the next council meeting, you'll see a, most likely an ordinance to reopen that alley, back up the traffic. Something we don't do very often. We usually close things, but we don't usually open them back up, but it should be done and ready to be opened back up, and that's it.
Can't we just settle on the alley?
Nobody wants to. We, we tried that once, and nobody was interested in acquiring it, so.
Give them money, come get them out of here.
So we did get that project resolved and taken care of. But other than that, any questions anybody has, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of Tobias? All right. Seeing none, our next meeting is going to be on August the 6th, and we'll have a work session on July 23rd. Mr. Catlin, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I would move that the meeting be adjourned at, at 8:00 PM, eight o'clock.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the meeting be adjourned at 8:00. Your vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry I confused you on that, but-